In Baroque, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the June 24th, 2024 School Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Maggie Smith here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Blanch.
Here.
Keven Zilke.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Khadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Nied.
Here.
With seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Khadija has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And we do not have any public participation this evening. So moving on to the District Administrator's Report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things this evening. First, I just wanted to give a quick construction update to everybody. Basically, to keep you up to speed, you can always go on our district website and our up-to-date information is on there about what's happening at each of our buildings. The real big piece that I wanted to share this evening is that tomorrow, on Tuesday, is when you will, they plan to close down a road by the middle school because that's going to be the start of the demolition of the north side, or as people refer to, sixth grade wing. So just to be careful and keep people safe that it's okay to watch, but watch from a distance. And then at Viking, they are really making grounds. Obviously, they're, you know, making that front parking lot larger and redoing those. So there's a lot going on outside. But inside, they have already got the demolition done on the south side of the building and they are putting up new walls already inside the building. So they're, it's going really well. And then, and there's lots of other little things, but these are kind of the main pieces. And then at Sand Lake and Prairie View, the playgrounds right now are out of commission. They have removed all the old equipment and they are putting in the surfacing for, to be able to have the all-inclusive parts put in with those playgrounds. And then they'll start to put in the new equipment after that. But that will be a process that will take, you know, at least a month. So we'll have to be patient. So that's the update on the construction. And then just a reminder that our elementary and middle school summer school starts Monday, July 8th. So we look forward to that beginning as our high school summer school first session continues. And obviously, we have lots of kids staying healthy and getting good use of our weight room and track and so on this summer. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to recognition and thank yous. Is it just Ben this evening?
Yeah.
All right. Activities Director Ben Taschner will recognize WIA sports, spring sports officials.
Good evening. Ben Taschner, Associate Principal Activities Director at the Middle School. I'm here tonight representing both myself and Mr. Lulaf, High School A.D. And we just wanted to, again, come and thank our officials for our spring season. As many of you know, spring is a busy time of definitely being flexible with canceled events due to weather or having to move and shift. And so both of us kind of using similar officials, kind of working with one another, how can we help each other out? But our officials always come through and give us the best support for our athletes so that they have the best experience at the middle school level and the high school level. So we are very thankful for, for all of them and that they continue to keep coming back. So we thank them for their dedication to our students.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to reports and discussion. Item 9.1, Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman will present the Fund Balance Designation. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Good evening. Tonight, I am here to present an estimated fund balance for June 30th of 2024. This is an annual event of, of the school board asked to take action to designate the purpose for the financial resources and fund equity. This is also a requirement, both in our board policy but of the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54. Reporting guidelines to require us to estimate and classify the fund balance into five different categories. Since we are not done with our fiscal year, the actual fund balance will be reported in the annual audit of financial statements upon completion of the 2023-24 audit. Quick reminder of fund balance, remember, it is not strictly cash. It's not equivalent, for example, to a person's cash savings or cash account. It's not entirely cash that can be used for any purpose. Financial reserves often include other things besides cash and some non-spendable components. It includes things like taxes receivable, grants receivable. Typically, a lot of our federal grant receivables are in that fund balance estimate and then any delayed state aid payments. So just a reminder there that it's not strictly a cash balance and it is a snapshot as of June 30th. The equity is assigned into two different categories. You'll see on the screen, the estimated chart does not currently include any non-spendable. That'll change next June at this time. There will be a balance in non-spendable and we will explain that when that time comes. Within the spendable category, there's further classifications that depict the relatively, relative strength of the constraints. And so I am going to just go through and share with you each of the funds and the estimated fund balances. For June 30th of 2024, we estimate the general fund, our major operational fund, to be just under 17 million and distributed into four different categories. You're familiar with the restricted being our sinking fund balances. There's always a commitment set aside for any post-employment obligations for retirees. And then we have an assigned fund balance of about 8.6 million because we do not get our first aid payment until into September and we will already have some payroll beginning July 1 of the new fiscal year. We reserve payroll and benefit and other payable obligations prior to that larger September state aid receipt. And then the rest of it, under that 16.9, almost 17 million, is operational cash flow needs unassigned and spendable. Next, for the gift accounts, estimated at about 1.2 million. If you recall from the preliminary budget for '24, '25, all of those gift accounts are reconciled as of June 30th and they're able to, each one of those, I think there's actually about 192, can carry over their balances and that becomes their new expenditure budget for the next year. So at this time, we're estimating about 1.2 million in fund balance for the gift accounts. And again, that does also include the set aside restricted for scholarship only. And then in debt service, Fund 39, fund balance is restricted spendable for principal and interest on bonds or prepayment on bonds at 3.5 million. The capital projects is a combination of both our construction Fund 42 and our long-term capital improvement trust fund, Fund 46, for a combined estimated fund balance of 36.4 million. Of that, about 735,000 is at Fund 46, Long-Term Capital Trust, and the rest is our referendum capital proceeds that we are spending down. As, as Dr. Mueller explained tonight, it's all of a sudden accelerated. There's a lot of action going. So we'll be spending more out of Fund 42 very shortly. Fund 50 is the food service, School Nutrition Fund, at about 1.8 million. And then lastly, our Community Service Fund, Fund 80. This is the resources that we levy for each November to support our Sale to Success program. And the estimated fund balance in Fund 80 is $187,000 as of June 30th. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Item 9.2, Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason and Director of Learning and Assessment Lacey Sin will now provide the annual notification of student academic standards. This item will appear on the July 8th consent agenda.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I am Lacey Sin, Director of Learning and Assessment, and I'm representing the Instructional Services Department. Obviously, Jill Mason, and you all know her. So every year, we are required by status to request your approval for notification of our student academic standards. This report and consent item is to provide notification to parents and guardians that the school district of Holman has requested approval by the Board of Education to adopt the Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS. The National Health Education Standards, the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Framework, or in other words, called CASL, and the Wisconsin Academic Standards for all other areas. Well, we have a long history with the Wisconsin standards for all the other areas as well as the NGSS standards. We are requesting this year a shift to the national health standards instead of the state standards since they have not been changed and adopted since 2011. Also, the national health standards are modeled, or I'm sorry, the Wisconsin standards are modeled after the national health standards. So regardless, we're hoping for that approval. We are also requesting to adopt CASL framework, which is an SEL framework that integrates nicely with the national health standards and they complement one another. Information about our standards and our curriculum, of course, will be, for each of our content areas, will be found on our Instructional Services webpage. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I have a question around the switch from the Wisconsin, the state health education standards to the national. Could you give us a little bit, I mean, I know you said that like the Wisconsin ones are based off of the national ones. Are there, like, what kind of differences exist? Would you say like the national ones give a little bit more or that the state ones are a little less restrictive? I'm just curious.
The national ones are now incorporating a lot more SEL into them as well. And like I said, the Wisconsin ones have not been updated since 2011 and we really want to next year start going through our curriculum cycle, re-looking at health, seeing where our materials, our resources, our units need to be updated. But we need to have updated standards in order to do that and knowing that Wisconsin has been in a pause for numerous years. And again, they're always adapted from the national standards. Like I said, we just would like to go ahead and use the national ones right now so that we can get that curriculum process started with going through and looking to see where our gaps, where our holes, what new resources do we need in order to get better learning in front of our students related to health.
We're in a really interesting and awesome position right now that the national standards also align really closely with CASL. And so we're working, Kim and Lacey have been working really well with Jennifer Gimmer and some of our health team and our SEL teachers to really collaborate and combine so that we can do more purposeful work together rather than separate. And so we'll be looking at the collaboration with health and SEL together so that we're walking that path from K all the way up to 12. And we could wait, but we'd rather not because we're poised in a position right now where we have staff who are ready to move and go and we can use the national standards.
Yeah, and I think the state has been saying for multiple years that, oh, this next year, we're going to roll out new ones. And that's been happening over and over and over and it still has not happened and we've just been in this pause. And so like Jill said, like, we have staff that definitely are ready to go, so.
And Khadija, I'll just confirm that I worked with that team at the state for a little bit and that is exactly what they have said for like the last three, four-plus years is it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. But with the new standards out nationally, I think it makes a lot of sense to adopt them because it's not even on the books yet from what I've seen. So I think it'll be a while before the state adopts the new ones. They're moving slow.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Item 9.3, Director of Student Services Jennifer Gimmer will present the Pupil Nondiscrimination Report. This item will appear on the July 8th consent agenda.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Gimmer, the Director of Safety and Student Services, and I'm here to present the People Nondiscrimin self-evaluation report. So every, at least every five years, Wisconsin Admin Code requires school boards to evaluate the status of nondiscrimination and ensure that their school district is providing equality educational opportunity. They recommend at least once every five years, so the last time this has been done was five years ago. Before I jump in it, I just want to thank all the people that participated in this. I know you got one report and we'll go through the presentation, but this took a lot of hours and time. And so thank you to all those who dedicated time, including our educators, teachers, admin, community members, and parents who participated. I really appreciate it. So to meet the five-year requirement, DPI lays out what is required for school districts to look at. And there's really eight areas we have to look at. Specifically throughout these eight areas, we have to include feedback from pupils, teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, residents. It's really all-encompassing as we look into these eight areas. So the next of the presentation, I'll just briefly go through the eight areas and talk about some key findings and recommendations that were highlighted in the report. So the first section is really looking at school board policies and administrative procedures. Here, it is asking us to look at all board policies and procedures that have been adopted by the board. So as key findings, as you can see, the board has adopted and updated all policies covered in all school operations. The district has trained two compliance officers. Our policies do include handbooks and Title X procedures, all available in the website. And staff are required to review several board policies each school year. So what are some recommendations that were found as a result of this? It is recommended, it's recommended that the district's going to, will train multiple administrators on gender rights, diversity considerations, and managing potential conflicts of interest, especially when it comes to Title IX. In addition, it's recommended that the district continues to stay up to date with Title IX guidance. And for increased visibility, it's recommended that the district will display a nondiscrimination report promptly on the school website for easy for community and parents to find. Next is enrollment trends, patterns, and classes and programs. Really, this area is looking at what are enrollment trends in the districts and any patterns associated with classes and programs and really looking at, are we making progress each year for our underrepresented groups? So what are some of the key findings is our state report card under represents student enrollment in AP and dual enrollment courses due to inaccurate data collection within our student information system. So that was a key finding for us. Data suggests that potential underrepresented minority students, students with disabilities, and students with low income backgrounds in AP courses. And what that really means is looking at the percentage of enrollment for those students, does the enrollment in AP match their overall enrollment within our district? And it tends to be lower than their enrollment in our district. So what are some recommendations? We need to gather more comprehensive data in enrollment rates, particularly for underrepresented groups. We need to train our staff who are responsible for coding in our student information system on proper coding procedures so then our state report card aligns. It's recommended to provide some targeted assistance and guidance to student populations concerning AP and dual enrollment options. And then looking at examining and redefining our process to ensure that all students in our district are aware of available opportunities and have equal access, especially the resources that are needed. The next is looking at methods, practices, and curriculum materials, but this really is looking, asking us to look at pre-K through 12 school counseling department program and asking whether all students are being included within that learning process. So can, key findings is in 2016, '17 is when the district adopted American School Counseling Association, or known as the ASCA model. The school counseling curriculum has not been officially updated since then. So recommendations is that all, a comprehensive review and update of the K through 12 school counseling curriculum is needed immediately. All school counselors should be trained on the ASCA model. Looking to improve communication and access to school counseling services for families and students. And looking at developing an onboarding process for new counselors and new educators within the district to familiarize themselves with the school counseling program resources and what we can offer through the ASCA model. The next section is looking at our disciplinary actions. More so, it's asking us to look at, evaluate trends and patterns in disciplinary actions, policies, and procedures and making sure that it's consistently applied to all of our students. Some findings was that all students and staff receive yearly training on bullying and harassment. The district does provide information on filing a sexual harassment complaint and all of our harassment policies clearly define and explain the consequences for harassment. There has been historic underutilization of our reporting system, which is known as Stop It, which is what we train our students to report any harassment complaints on. Also, our discipline data shows inconsistency in coding and there is a potential for racial and ethnic disparity and suspension rates for Black students and students identifying as two or more races. So what are some recommendations? Increase awareness for students, staff, and parents on how to file harassment complaint. Ensuring the district website provides information on all forms of harassment, not just sexual harassment. Remain committed to developing a comprehensive code of rights, responsibilities, and guidelines that have been started the '23, '24 school year, just has not been finalized yet. It's recommended to train students and staff on bystander intervention to encourage more reporting of observed harassments. Potential recommendation is establishing a hate and bias response team to address and repair harm from disciplinary incidents. And then implement more restorative justice practices, which have begun to be pushed the '23, '24 school year, but looking to continue that work. The next area asks us is looking at trends and patterns for athletics, extracurricular activities, and recreational activities. Really, it's looking at what are our patterns pre-K through 12 and does, is there a fair, is there fair and equitable inclusiveness across all of our students? The district provides, some findings is the district provides equal financial support for all male and female programs and that the participation rates generally align. Data shows that we are increasing enrollment of minority students and students with disabilities within the past three years. Our website has an amazing prominent tab deck dedicated to all these athletics and clubs, which is easy to find for families and students. Participation rates for students with disabilities remain lower than students in general education. And a few sports do lack counterparts of the opposite sex. So example, like lacrosse, volleyball. So recommendations is maintaining a focus on ensuring diverse student representation, keeping track of lacrosse, a girls' lacrosse, and considering adding it as a sport when enrollment allows, which I know is a goal right now for the high school. And looking to explore strategies for generating financial resources for clubs that don't have a dedicated booster. This is something Ben Taschner and Jason have worked really close on tracking, so I think this area is a huge highlight for our district and something I want to keep note on. Looking at scholarships. So this is asking what are patterns in awarding scholarships and whether are some students, or groups of students significantly underrepresented as a receipt of award versus other groups of students or other awards? So in our district, students are offered a comprehensive booking of all the scholarships and awards, and this can be found in the senior canvas page. There's currently no formal process to track scholarship recipients by protected status class. There are specific efforts that our district's currently doing to engage student populations and families regarding scholarships, but overall, they generally appear to be lacking. So some recommendations is implement a system to collect protected class information to see how we are doing for our scholarships because right now, that is not something that is tracked. Consider developing an outreach initiative to increase the awareness of scholarship opportunities, especially with our marginalized student families and communities. And looking to conduct a comprehensive review of the scholarship process to making sure, is it truly accessible for all students within our district? The next section is looking at equal, quality of educational opportunity and nondiscrimination. Essentially, it's asking us, does our district have efforts or prioritize achievement, equality, educational opportunity, and nondiscrimination throughout the district? What are we doing to promote that philosophy here? The district's vision of belong, serve, and succeed in core values truly emphasize inclusivity, equity, and excellence within the district. Our school board upholds high expectations for student learning and achievement. Scheduling constraints do prevent some staff members, such as bus drivers, from participating in all professional development opportunities. And the district demonstrates a commitment to DEI efforts through a dedicated board committee and efforts of inclusive environment. Some recommendations to ensure that we're continuing the work is an explore and implement strategies to increase accessibilities of all PD for all of our employees within our district, which I know has been a goal and continues to be a goal. And also increase the visibility of our district's vision statement by promptly displaying it on the school website and other communication materials to make sure that's at the forefront of everything we do. Lastly, is essentially this report. Part of the requirement is making sure that our People Nondiscrimination Report is going to be available for students, parents, and staff. So participation in this report reflected the school's diversity and gender and disability status. However, not all racial groups were involved, present in the school community, along with those who are in the evaluation. Also, students were not, not directly involved in this evaluation process. So reflecting back through this, some recommendations for the next time that this is done is extending personal invitations to participate evaluation of community members, especially for racial background and underrepresented groups specifically in the data. So who are we talking about and getting their voice at the table? And also exploring ways to involve students because they are the voice of this data and ensuring that they have a seat at the table. That I have for you today.
All right. Any questions?
I have a couple. One is just a clarity question. When it said a conflict of interest for Title IX, what would that be? Like, what would, what is a conflict of interest related to Title IX?
So we have two Title IX coordinators within the district. We have Melissa and Jill, Melissa Katz and Jill Mason. So exploring different avenues of when you have to do a Title IX investigation for someone that you may have a conflict of interest internally with.
Okay. Okay. Like a personal conflict.
Yes.
And then I guess my other question was just like overall, how the recommendations from this report would, will be, or would be utilized with the DEI committee?
Yeah, that's a good recommendation and question. I was thinking about that myself, is serving on the DEI committee, especially, I have to say, when writing these recommendations, a lot of these recommendations came from staff themselves who had voice at the table. They live and breathe this data, especially our high school educators. They gave a lot of insight on what's been happening and what they view. So when we were writing these recommendations, I was, had that in the back of my mind of how can we intentionally incorporate this into our DEI board committee and also our groups within those schools? Because I think that would be a really natural way to build this from the ground up.
I just had a question. And, you know, nothing was necessarily surprising in this report and, I mean, we had some great highlights. And I don't think that any of us, again, would be surprised by some of the recommendations based on the DEI effort. How does this compare to five years ago? Because not being on the board back then, it's hard to sometimes like see a report like this, kind of without the historical context. And then, you know, I'm thinking like five years from now, what does this look like?
So most of the eight areas always stay the same. I wasn't here eight years ago as five years ago, but I did read the report at that time. It's because it's still prominently displayed on our website. We can look at it. But I was reviewing the report. I would say all areas we made growth on. The one that we did not make growth on was our school counseling curriculum. That has stayed stagnant since 2016 and '17. So really wanting to focus on that is our first priority because that was back-to-back five years, reports that we haven't made movement on. But a lot of the areas were similar, but were closing gaps and heading in the right direction, which makes me very excited and eager to be in the district.
Yeah. Thank you. That's awesome.
I have a question regarding the folks who contributed to the report. And I know, I, I mean, obviously, you just read off the recommendation about trying to kind of expand.
mean, obviously you just read off the recommendation about trying to kind of expand the folks. I guess maybe two logistics questions. Number one, is there like a set number of people that can serve on this or be contributed to this report? And number two, like what are you looking for in terms of access or like, like what kind of people are you looking for to be on, to contribute to a report like this? Just so we know for five years from now.
Yeah, within the, if the next time this report is happening, so the next five years, a huge recommendation would be making sure that the seat's at the table and the people analyzing the data are the people who are represented in the data. I think that was a downfall on my half in this report, not having, not taking that step to make sure that they're accurately represented, because people are more than just numbers and talking about data in a way that they're not represented is a huge growth. Most of these areas always stay the same, so when this report has to be done again in five years, would be very conscious of who we're choosing and making sure they represent those underrepresented groups, whether that's community members, students, or DEI board committee would be heavily involved, would be a recommendation.
Excellent, thank you.
I was thinking that the staff development days occurred mostly on non-school days? Is there a lot of those that occur on, because the bus drivers aren't able to attend?
You can go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. I would say it's a mixture. The bus drivers are the, one of the most difficult group to get together because at any opportunity, when we can do professional development, they're either driving or it's a time that they are not currently in district. We try to offer very flexible times for our EAs or admin assistants, all the other groups that may not get swept in the general PD. Our bus drivers are ones that have been voices of feeling that they need additional professional development. They're a trickier group, but setting aside time has been kind of a goal for us this year, and we've been able to reach them for a lot of our DEI efforts this year.
That's good, thanks. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 9.4. I welcome Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason back to the table to present the 660301 agreements for physical therapy and Project Search. The items will appear on the July 8th consent agenda.
All right. I will start with our 660301 agreement with OnAlaska for a physical therapist. We've done this, oh gosh, maybe three or four? This is a way for us to maintain a full-time physical therapist in our schools. OnAlaska needs one day and we need four days. And so we're able to partner with them, and it's been a great partnership. We have a great physical therapist that we work with, and so we'd like to continue that partnership as long as it works for both of us. And this coming year, it should work for both of us again, if you all agree. Any questions about that one?
Any questions? No questions.
Okay. And then the next one is our 660301 agreements for Project Search. This year, we only have agreements for Project Search, our Project Bridge and Project Live. All of the students will be the school district of Holman students. We actually have one student that's moving to the district to have better options for their adult students. So really, this year, it's just Project Search. We are partnering with Bangor, Lacrosse, Baroka, and West Salem, and we hope to have another great year of interns. Any questions about that one?
Questions? No questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 9.5. Dr. Mueller will present the 2024-25 police liaison contract for consent on July 8th.
Yeah, so we've engaged in a relationship with the village of Holman, well, ever since I've been here, before then, to partner in collaboration to have a police liaison officer within our school buildings. They spend the majority of their time at the high school. They also spend some time at the middle school and more, more on an ad-needed basis at our elementary school. It's, it's one, one person, one police liaison, and we share 50/50 in the expense with the village, which we're very thankful for this partnership. So looking for approval to continue this relationship with the village of Holman, and it would be a cost of approximately $31,000 to the school district.
All right, any questions? No questions. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion, but any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Motion by Maggie.
Go ahead.
Second.
Second by Kadija. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor who have approved in the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. So tonight, we will start with Maggie.
Not too much for me tonight, just wanted to pass along, thanks to the WIA officials. I know it's, I've heard it's tough to recruit them and appreciate the work they do to make activities possible. Thanks.
Okay, Bridgette.
I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
Barbara?
I do not have anything tonight either.
And Kevin?
I do not have anything, sorry.
And Kadija.
All right, if you guys will indulge me for a moment, I do have something tonight. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'll make it as quick as possible. This would have been my report at our last board meeting, but unfortunately, I was traveling at the time. And so tonight, I will bring you my report from the CISA annual meeting. So I went to the CISA annual meeting as our school board rep, met with school board reps from all over the CISA IV district. So every year, I actually also got to do it last year, which was really cool, and got to do it again this year, which was nice because I actually felt like I knew what I was doing this year. And essentially, the meeting, the annual meeting, is to allow CISA to go over their annual report, which you can find on CISA IV's website, and kind of talk about all the really cool things that they do and the ways that they support all the school districts. And another really cool, I mean, besides getting to meet with members of school districts from across this region, besides that, they also have a presentation that is just about a topic that they think would be beneficial for school boards to know more about. And so this year, their presentation for the annual meeting was about mental health in schools, and that applied to both students and staff and educators. It really, you know, I think it stemmed from the fact that our CISA IV is on the front lines of creating a program called Framework for Success that they are implementing in different districts around the area that deals with student mental health. But some really big takeaways that I, you know, that really stuck with me was just, you know, one thing that they noted was that the rates of diagnosed mental health concerns in young people today are like astronomically high. In the state of Wisconsin, it's reported that 61.4% of young people have some sort of documented mental health condition. And this kind of, of course, ranges from, you know, all different kinds of manifestations, but it also, the, the percentage rates in certain marginalized groups are definitely higher. So this is the average for all groups. But it also talked about how our educators right now are, and all of our staff are really also experiencing, due to high stress levels at work and heavy workloads and just all the other constraints that we all know about very well, lack of subs, and also just like positions going unfilled and us having to cover multiple positions has led to really high rates of staff and educator mental health concerns. And the thing that I really appreciated and the thing that I think aligns pretty well with how I understand our district's like emphasis on things like social and emotional learning, aligns, aligns well with that, is just this idea that like you can't outperform your mental health, that you need to have your social and emotional needs taken care of before you're able to sit down and do math and do language arts and be able to succeed in all these areas. So I was really proud that I could kind of sit there and, and say like, actually, I think my district is really doing, and not that others couldn't, but, you know, I, I had things that I could point to, that I was like, this, these are the ways that we're trying to tackle this for our students and also helping our staff. So, you know, of course, they give some recommendations. I think at this point, I'm really confident in where we're headed as a district, but it was really cool to kind of see what resources exist for other districts in the area. And I, yeah, I mean, I really just, I think, appreciated the emphasis on this. I think that we are, we need to continue to have this at the forefront of our minds because at the end of the day, like, we are helping to take care of our students and our staff. And so to make sure that we're centering their mental health before we center their like achievements or productivity, I think is really important. But like I said, the CISA IV annual report is on their website. It's awesome, take a look. Kind of gives you an idea of, of what kind of resources they offer to the district, districts. So that's my thing. That's all I got.
Thank you. Chris?
I don't have anything tonight.
And Lindsay?
Nothing for me today.
Okay, I just want to thank the officials, and I also want to thank the district for the, all the work they put into the pupil non-discrimination report. I thought you did a really good job, so I appreciate that. Upcoming board meeting schedule, our next two meetings are at 7:00 PM on July 8th and July 22nd. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Maggie has moved?
I will second.
Press a second to adjourn the meeting at 7:41 PM. Motion carried, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.